You said that... ...you were communicating with the... ...with the Justice... ...on the Indian State Job... ...in the Empire State District?
Yes.
Okay, now... What the Commission would find out is that... ...article 17 of the La Grande Constitution appears to say it's in the right... ...this was a sample... ...to protect the representative of the representative. But where we are concerned is... ...why you decided to go to the American Embassy? Why... why you decided to go to the US Embassy instead of going to... ...to the representative of the representative?
On the... on the 26th of July 2006?
Yeah, for protest.
Okay.
Are you... like, also clear?
I am. Why have you decided to... ...to go to the US Embassy for our action?
Yeah, instead of going to the Capitol Building?
The Capitol Building?
Yeah.
Now... We chose the grounds of the US Embassy for a single reason. And that reason was... ...to be... ...to be seen firstly for protection. Because they contained... ...we were trying to read this, you know... ...you know, clever in our studies. The reasons for which the Ministry of Justice rejected our communication was not known. So, except when I guarantee protection. And by all means, we have done sufficient mobilization amongst the people of that area, besides the most extreme masses. And we do not call up the protest action. So saying this, we will not guarantee protection... ...we will not guarantee protection anywhere by government. We decided to choose the grounds of the US Embassy. And obviously, the US Embassy as a place for the US Embassy to be an entity or an institution now, we will give our attention to what would be a place of assembly. Among you, the US Embassy is in a area, it's in Montréal. So, I think this is the point that we got, the assembly. And there is no way, how we can actually get the US Embassy over all of the republics. So, where we are, where we are at the assembly, all these streets, number here, is part of that area, besides them, somewhere like in there in Montréal. Now, I think the intention was to be somewhere more safe. We will wait for our police to come and draw us. Because the protest action was not made in the state of the US Embassy. We will go to the parade street, come to the Capitol Building, Central of Montréal, before the university come out. And plan our action, our right action. But that did not happen.
Okay, um... The reason why this question is important is that... ...the American Embassy compound is surrounded. Enter there, become a different entity, not a library here. Do you understand that?
I'm hearing clearly what the Commission...
Enter the US compound, it's surrounded by an annual library here, not in America. And so, what was for us is to go there in a foreign nation, to go protest, instead of using article 17 of La Grande Constitution. But the reason why we decided to go there, if correct, is to post up to it, you know, some irregularities. Because as where the world, credit for the tree, we don't want peace that may be discovered, we want peace. This is why the Commission, which is charged with this particular issue of 17, to go to the immigration, we said to get involved in this. But what I want to find out is that, did you bring the director of police? When you were... you were... you were going to protect, you were riding, uh...
That I told you, the president wrote the Ministry of Justice, and now we see far all of the relevant institutions involved. It's a matter, the police, as you know, those institutions, had our communication. And just to clarify, actually, we were not in the things of the US Embassy. For the fact that we example out, it means that we're on the grounds of that area.
Alright. The reason why we decided to ask this question, is questioning the police, is that it is not compulsory that you ask for public protest, no. But you gave notification to the justice department for protection. This is why we said to ask this question. Where, we thought it was police, and we are going to protest, so I thought, security for you. But, uh, you did not write directly to the director of police, so...
Certainly.
Okay, you will not go to justice department, so... Okay, uh... How many police have been there?
Uh, the evidence that we gathered here, we had about... We have footage about, uh, no, footage about comrades who were body injured. And, uh, we were able to get the ones who were in vehicle to write their testimonies. And, uh, we were able to get a lot of evidence, pictorial, and as well as having possession of video evidence. So, we have few real evidence, and we have few pictorial, because of reasons there's going to assume comrades who were involved. Not really, any of them, on picture, to come and testify on our behalf, but it's clear. So, what we have here is a file containing testimonies of all the comrades who were involved. And then, you can add this. That is, there are bureaus for these. And, uh, yes, the pictorial evidence, the one containing the photo of Christopher Simi, the student was body brutalized on Canada, and was... was being violated by the early... And the next photo in association is from George D'Assau. That's from George D'Assau, he was body injured, always high, and, uh, that is, his photo as well. And then we have Kumi Poortoru, Poortoru's photo is there as well, body injured, you can see for yourself. And then we have, uh, Kumi Jack Bassan, one of the students who were... ...uh, if let, get out. He was kind of snubbed while on his way for the protest, around the 5:40 p.m. And he was taken to a known destination. It took two days after, before we could find Gabriel Jack Bassan. And the rest of the offshoot, the offshoot we got is a photo of Christopher Simi, a torture comrade, a comrade who was tortured before Canada. If, if, uh, been fired, so... That is it. So, for video evidence, for if video evidence, you know, we have from our fund, perhaps is the commission can... can... can show also by to... Okay, to send it to, if you all find everything to them, to see for yourself.
Now, um... Six, the situation was about six. But, uh, it is soon enough, I don't care.
Six, the situation, not soon because, you know, something arrested. Now... We are around, as a matter of fact, the student education party is the one that is fine complaining in this situation. We all know when the situation occurred on July 26th, it took about two days before the La Grande National Republic, who's... who write a statement, or to give a position statement on the situation, about coming into investigate, or coming to investigate. And, uh, it took about four days before the Justice Ministry came out with a statement, asking the police to put on being, and to investigate a matter. So, in the two days, before your institution, it gave a position statement on the situation. So... We then all five complained around here. And before then, you wrote, I think we sent the communication, before you gave a statement on the matter on July 26th. You wrote to communication first, and I think it was on our communication, and maybe they submitted videos and photos that I saw on social media, and all products that informed your decision to come over that situation.
The COP and CDC, uh... Are now before the court. Tell the commission now whether you are invited to go to the court. But according to you, you said that, uh... You want to complain, is this so?
Certainly.
Okay. But, uh, CDC, COP, or tried? Did you ever appear in the courtroom?
They've not been tried, they've not appeared before any panel of justice to try. And we can see a silly. But, uh, what needs to be understood here is that... People who was made by the law, in the rest of the situation, it was based on pressure. Pressure generated here on the move from a wave of condemnation that came from civil society or institutions. And the other institutions, and other human rights groupings, and the international community. The decision to have a rest firstly, on all those who were involved in the situation. It's a one that was sanctioned by the President of the Republic of that area after he made a new exposition on the... on... on the situation. So, it was that, what happened was a... And nobody needs to talk about this situation. The police was on the ground of the US Embassy, up Benzes Street, Snabble Hill. Before the eyes of police people, our comrades were mad, hanged, they were body brutalized, they were totally humiliated. And the police that were there, they were like passing, and do not do anything. Immediately after the situation, when they go to brutalizing, torturing, Christopher Simi, when they come to put him on the road back to leave the scene, the police team, they did not make any arrests. For the fact that they saw people, and people who were in that terrain, that environment, some of them were being invaded into, their property were being vandalized, and what have you. They were like giving orders of the situation. Nothing happened, no arrests were made, they won, they took the three, up to the sixth day after the situation, before arrests were made in the situation. So, even when you greatly the video, I don't know if I, something you always say, the government's student education party, do a overview of the video footage that was done by Kumi TV, uh, Naranco TV, from the Africa. And, uh, just to make few, these are media platform that you go and get overview of the view. You get to see that after the situation, the police were like having conversation with all the people friendly. So, it didn't brought to the conclusion that there was an acquaintance meeting had, here when I was convey between the police and all that, and the police knew what happened. Because he gave me here, brutalized people, you with the primary responsibility of protecting life, the property, you stood personally, you cannot do anything. So, we, as an institution, when we found our complaint, in fact, we did not find our complaint, besides then to the police, or writing institution, because you knew that the police were like almost passed, they were part of the situation. So, we wrote independent institution, human rights groupings. And our relevant institution encountering the national community to call investigation of the matter. So, the police, for the fact that they were there, and then were treated in a manner of form, they cannot be able to reserve or, you know, an independent investigation. And that is the reason why we came up with a statement. And in that statement, we're calling on your institution, or we're calling on the president, if you want to take seat of this matter, and is very clever in the issue of dispensing justice to all groups who were, you know, in the situation. Now, you was completely dependent panel consisting of your institution, other civil right, uh, civil rights, civil society, or institutions like Centa, Arret, neighbor partners of the Democratic, or initiative, and even other relevant international partners, human rights groupings that were coming to examine the matter. But you cannot have the police that was part of the situation, ask us to go before them for investigation. When it took even six days after, before they could make an arrest in the matter, though the evidence, when the evidence were there, in good numbers, on the social media, in the video footage, everything, the photos, everyone saw for themselves. So, somebody could have been suspect, and committed crime after six days, before you go to make arrest, then you would call those who were the victims of the situation, continue to go and have conference with them. You call for comrades, they did not call for investigation. You call us to go and sit with the people from CDC, COP, to have conversation. So, change that invitation, and they did not even invite us. Our institution is a responsible and well structured institution. If you want to be valid for hearing or conference at the university headquarters, you should read us. And our constitution, not that it says it has to reach for the university. So, you got to firstly inform the authority of the university that XYZ institution that is part of the university here is involved in this matter, and the body wants to give payment. And it's one that we go so wide, who have gone to the grounds of the police headquarters, on that day, and they have us apprehended, they say whether the cost here, what we have been on bargaining.
How long did it take before the police arrived to receive? Where is it located?
There are few police people that were there. And, uh, it's before their eyes, we were body treated in a manner. And afterward, the symbol of reinforcement, when the reinforcement came, they did not do anything. And that is the reason why I'm imploring you, please do a overview of the video footage that were done by from the Africa, Naranco TV online, SponTV online.
And from your side, question. Uh, you said, you... you say, oh, what would you recommend?
Now, I was recommending that we have an independent investigative panel, and, uh, sanctioned by the President of the Republic, to have this matter well investigated to a logical conclusion. And, uh... Our institution cannot be a party to an investigation, now being presided over by the police. For the fact, they were there. And up to today's date, all the police that were there, which officers that were there, on the same. Since the police issued a statement calling for, you know, sanctioning these people for investigation, they are here to tell the the right people, not the student education party, but the right people. And, you know, the... the... the staff of the investigation for not that far, on all those police officers who were there, and who were in the same, who were in the situation, possibly, and do not do anything.
You got it?
Yes.
Okay, um, as we said two days later, and this, uh, factifying, uh, not criminal investigation, we want to find out, I don't know, who is responsible for the whole situation that occurred in that case. Who is responsible? This is why we decide to invite them to come, here inside the school, and other parties who come in. After that, we will file filings, and then, uh, I know filing, tell the La Grande National Republic who is responsible, and then, uh, and then, and then, eliminate of that. So, it can't happen anymore, because our fear is that the way things are going, we are going to was, only for the free election. They will not post up to fight this happening, and we will be like... We will go ahead, and so, the La Grande National Republic, based on us, make sure that things are proper and normal. We will pray for it, the government, and continue to support the case, the law, and the society. Those who are responsible in the harbor game, based upon my research that they not do their work, you will inform the player that who is responsible. So, tell me for the work.
Uh, I want to come up with something, play it through this. And, uh, another thing I want to add off is that when you do a overview of the video, you again understand that the complex of the university, the Capitolium complex, was firstly invaded by those people in search of some medics. So, as part of the evidence, the video evidence that was sent, the RT personnel here, will be sending you that evidence as well, to see how it was into our office, how they were at the University of La Grande Campus, it was into our office, the vandalized, the property is there. And, uh, another thing is that, this situation is not the first time. As an institution, for the last five years, on this, on this mission of, for some year, we have been body tortured, brutalized, the man, who, but people believed to be the supporters of the new establishment, or the army, or the man who sees this will be the SAVU unit, ZIRI unit. The last time, uh, to add on, we have a master of the first. We had a very unfortunate situation at the university campus, the Central Valley Campus. The daily President of La Grande Public House, on the local program, the owner of Eastway Artiches, a legendary actor saw it, and that program was degenerated. And, uh, people who were led by the expedition on the command of the Mayor of Montréal, 2014, on that day, now, we had our comrades with severe brutalize. And since then, we go to the institution, we talk about commission. We are here to have here, ready to handle matter. So, as far as your conduct of these processes, we show that there you know those who are responsible for this situation, the owner mind, the rapport of persons, the owner mind, our democratic gains, as a country and people, we will implore you that, perhaps, you still looking to that matter, because it's a matter that we are not taking lightly as an institution. Each time we write an institution, we see the capital, right, international human rights limits, and file this complaint, and what have you. So, as part of knowing the, if like, the mastermind, the chief architect, beyond these things, we implore your commission, please tap into the matter of master of the first, and we complain to the institution here, so that you can not hear into that matter as well. Because as an institution, we will have these things on record. So that tomorrow, if the town council, or the day of recording council, we take the witnesses, our witnesses as we are doing, can be able to speak from their own, informed perspective, and we have the necessary evidence to substantiate whatever claim that we are making to these situations. Take it very well.
Thank you for coming. Now, before the chairman, uh...
This is front page, Africa, we are live at the independent national commission of immigrants compound in Sincol, Montréal, where the IHR is holding a public hearing on the violent altercation between the Student Unification Party of the UL and the CDC COP on July 26th. Most of you watching, we have been aware this violence resulted into the injury of several members of the Student Unification Party of UL. And since then, the government has arrested several members of the CDC COP and are currently on bill, and within trial. Here now is the chairman of soup. He's been taking big witness stance. That's I, IHR. Here to consult on the best of brand.
They said, we're very, very, very huge. We want to make sure that there is peace that created in that moment. And what happened in that crisis is unbelievable, especially in a foreign diplomatic era. So, you look in the fingers of interest that you can't think that we require to find out actually what happened. You want to know who's the root cause of this. Who is responsible for this? Now, so, uh... Tell us, what happened in that crisis?
Alright, thank you very much. Again, my name is Mustafa Inka. Chairman of the Student Unification Party, and the leader of this organization here. And I'm here to testify on behalf of the students who are on net, doing the blood, in that crisis, don't take them to a, a place, at the US Embassy. So, before that crisis, the Student Unification Party has had a strong evaluation of government, as well as its community, the ones of our party, to ascertain as to, as critical students in the republic, to understand, and working on government, and critique the system as it has always been known as student leaders. So, on that note, to insert figure, we encourage a hard bid, and it was a great move by our party executives, just the senior community, who to have a protest on July 26th, to call the attention of the government on the pressing issues, the structural issues in the country, on the issue of economic failure, as well as corruption. Stating directly the issue of the 28th of February reform, as well as the LCC report, that entitled, the Agrominister, the religious laws, the three hundred officials, as well as the issue of STBV, rape, secret killings, and all of the, you know, contradictions that occur around here in the country. On that note, why we plan our rally with the students, decided to write the Ministry of Justice, because as a responsible student party, we believe in the rule law, so on standing there, why they should have our constitutional right, on article 17, if you want to assemble, we decided also test the system, so as a system capable of security for the students, we protesting on that day. So, when the Ministry of Justice, unfortunately, the Ministry of Justice rejected our communication, and on several occasions, we tried our, it's possible to get a communication there, but they did not, ahead of our, that of... However, of course, we engage all our stakeholders and all partners, because they did not go to the Ministry of Justice, also send copy to the independent commission of human rights. And also, we need the US Embassy as well, to inform them, to petition them, not to inform them that on July 26th, we'll be protesting, they're on July 25th. Before that, move to the legislature, on the same 25th, and we inform them that we're going to protest them, as well as we petition to them on the question of the corruption, the corruption scandal from the latest in the LCC report. So, after doing all of our engagement, and better all of our communication, we finally decided on July 26th, we're going to protest, and we gave a particular occasion, we're protesting, unfortunately... Unfortunately, by 5:00 AM in the morning, we received intelligence, though our student group, we also have people who gave us information from the game, we received intelligence that the government was planning to counter protest to the CDC COP. Before then, the CDC COP had announced a protest on any march, or any risk to celebrate the independence. It was from the Student Unification Party that has announced earlier, and during the time when we were going to protest on the boundary, the country campaign, which will visit the entire symptoms, market, and schools. And so on the eve of the protest, we realized that the guys were planning counter protest for security reasons. Normally, the Student Unification Party can organize on the university campus. Normally, even if we're going to organize to the place we supposed to be at, the ground which is creating the communication, we assume at the time of the grace of movement and movement. So while we were waiting, the other students who arrived, we saw the footage of owner of Colita Massa being kidnapped by some members of the CDC COP, we have the evidence there, the secretary general sharing some of the evidence view. So he wants to die in our own house, and we said, but it is dangerous for the legal shaping students. So let's bring group to someone who can have protection and safety. Knowing for the weather, we have already written the American embassy, crowd of protesters, and we understand that there are security cameras, on a security features around the embassy, that will give us some kind of leverage, even for media and whatsoever. Because our plan was therefore confrontation with any group, as well as to have safety and protection of the students. Because this march would tend to be peaceful, as we play a source of work for the government to say, you know, they are official, or we gave our petition to the embassy, to give it to the government. Unfortunately, we reassemble the embassy, unfortunately, we saw the members of the CDC COP who have already gone on campus, instead of pity students, who are come on campus, carry the moon by, five six hours to join the protest, instead of pity someone the comrades, instead of, and so on and go on there. So those comrades who go on there, give us information that the guys are coming to the university embassy, where you are assembled, I said, to the secretary general, I said, no. The people can't come here, but they are international, so, and secondly, because we don't want confrontation with anyone, they don't refuse to go there, but we don't want to go anywhere that will have this kind of confrontation with any other group. So we are going to stay here to show the police who provide, you know, security, and we'll make sure the guy will have issue. Because if you saw the road on Monday on 26th day, they were tracking all along the way, moving from here, the way to Shong, straight to the airport. So it is not just possible, and it was not just possible for any people in mass, kind of group, to both door that block it. So we were not expecting any group to counter us and embassy. While we were watching some media, online TV, as well as other popular news outlet, we saw the guys, you know, both doing on the barricade. And even the last barricade on Benson Street, they started, you know, they forced all the forces away, while the police were there escorting them. So the police escorted them, so the police officers were even at the scene, where we're still peacefully at the embassy, the comrades are waiting for many hours, right below the bus stop, waiting by 10:30 to come and read the petition. So when the CDC COP guys came, all of the militants decided on it. They were taking instructions from the militant chair, and we instructed him clearly that those guys are coming a lot of the past, do not speak to anyone, do not talk about the battle with anyone, do not talk to anyone, do not comment on anything they say. So the guys came, initially due to security reason, I decided to be on the bus stop, and followed the, they saw them, they came a box, fresh, and went up. The embassy around the Masseyville, and after they went there, certain time, they came back, they started surrounding, the most Student Unification Party. So when they started surrounding us, they told the students to surround them. So the propaganda chair was my chief of view, was giving, thank you very much, was giving a slap on his back on video footage. And then the militant chair told the militant, this place nasty, we have a desert here. Before the militants were trying to leave the place, the guys have a few teams, they had to go, we're going to someone that are gone, we are, we are footage of, I don't know about you, the comrades are, they press to, we should share our footage, and we'll share it with the festival, and once we, I give them a part of the petition and evidence. So the guy, the guys are, hold on, they don't, we're going to start a pity post, instead of telling the students, to leave the street, the campus, we are giving a situation, and they don't leave for the protest of independence, they want to protest of independence, they left. And if in my imagination, for someone was asked, why would someone want to protest of independence there? Because the constitution does not give a face to the protest. Want to, no one is stopping your company to your independent country. You have the right to go and celebrate your independence, and if there's a challenge, everyone to celebrate, they have the right to assemble and event that, and you present this movement contrary to that government, as destroying the constitution. So those guys, all they did was to communicate, started chasing, to base all over the country. Police was alienating them, but he not even catching some of the members of soup. And then what the CDC COP, who was comprised of Sabu unit, these were totally Sabu unit guys who, who were on the banner of CDC COP. So we managed to escape the scene, we managed to escape the scene after the other party, going into our hideout. After a certain time, we reassemble strategically and made our position clear to the African people to the media. That was the end of the day. But then, one of the most excruciating part of everything at that place is that while the students and militants were very put on last really, but one of our comrades, in comrades, Christopher Wodasu, Sibily, he was now on the brutalized total, because he he looked for happiness, and he was caught. And then they grabbing, they necking, scraping naked, and we put a saying, he was the judge. And since then, he has been very critical of the government now, he has a very good recovery, and he's continue to continue to teach children as soon as he can. However, we continue to see a best, we give treatment to those who go on there, on the places. All of them are trying to come through, unfortunately, Mr. Christopher Sissou, is very critical, and I want him to keep in your prayers, for us to pray for God, he will go to him, on God, Sissou, he has those who go on there on that day. And I like the conclusion, the Student Unification Party will always be a party that believes in the rule law, will always follow the legality, and will believe peace. Our preach social justice, academic law, and peace. So we will never be taught the violence, and we as young people should not be allowed to use institute violence by any responsible waterfall, or against, and will continue to top your our struggle to a peaceful manner, we want to take it to youth, to the university, to the university, the Student Unification Party will continue to be repobbing, so they send to independent commissions such as this, unlike all of people who have parted to the farm. Because if you see people who have parted to your farm, you know, if because they are not the player, they are not the player, he did, he will, because he will, he like what he is doing. On our source, I think, the student panel, and purely independent, we believe the student party will be free. And we are any day, any time, I come and test it, I must have a kind, chairman of the Student Unification Party.
Okay, um, the chairman, you made one point that you were part of the kitchen. And you were elected, uh, you were elected that he was a dictator, isn't so?
Yeah.
So where is he now?
Well, first of all, I've been taken to the, we're company, we have decided to keep me at the local office, for superior reason, for superior group on camera. We decide not to expose the case, because we're talking initially to, care the hospital, they don't care. They hear the real hospital. Somebody seen members of the CDC COP, we saw there at the hospital, trying to tell Christopher to find a way, and the long way we want to do to him, so on that basis, we decided to keep this security, we have to help keep him properly, and clean it for superior reason. We decide to not disclose this place, but privately, we can disclose it to the commission off camera, so that for a single investigation, we see soon. For superior reason, we not disclose to who we are about right now.
Is he talking?
No, he's not talking, he's only complaining of pain, with his back, he only cry, well, he don't start talking, he's not speaking.
Any commission have more to ask for you? Any other commission have more to ask for? Or any statement you made, or just probably the one question? I just didn't have the time. Do I have any other question? Um, before you, when you dispute protest, did you write the legislature justice?
Obviously, yes, I wrote the legislature justice, on to that point. The case was, it's been a, that's a, that's a thing there.
Did you see, they didn't take it, they didn't receive this request?
Where the legislature justice did not reply, and they rejected the letter on first. Second, we continuously carry the letter in the air, with this, a level, a level down issue with the justice, the secretary general. Because after the first two, we attempt to drop a letter, too many people rejected the letter, and he was unable to get the letter to them, so I told him to continuously push the legislature justice to receive the letter. But if, and only if they did not receive it, it is also our constitutional right to assume peacefully protest. So the letter was just against the family law, ensuring that soup is an institution that we give in the rule law, and what the protocol is, the procedure, like it's positive, you know, I was from, because we are not the country to bring the people peacefully. So constitutionally, we didn't have a right to legislature of the protests, under the balance of the constitution of the Republic of Nigeria.
Uh, did you, did you notify the police?
Yeah, they don't notify the police to the legislature justice, it is through that communication that the police will notify, and we're receiving the communication by the legislature justice.
Uh, the, this question is very important on ground that you are not compelled as a public to demonstrate for protesting, under Article seventeen, that is clear. But notification is required for the whole security. Usually, the reason why the government has been informed about the protest is to provide security. And not compulsory that, uh, uh, you have to, as a public, but for the whole security, this is why I ask this question.
Which we did.
Okay, now, that, 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 we're talking. Um, how many parties have gone on there?
About approximately fourteen parties. So far, I'm going to, one of the brother was kidnapped, I can tell you, on the army, it took us about two days to find him, and he still complaining about, you know, some side effects, some pain in his body, in his chest, on the pity, he talked, and I tell you, he had additional trouble because I don't know why the pain is, why, on the past, on the past, soup is not kidnapped.
Now, um, you got any question to ask any of you commissioners? Do you have that question?
No.
Now, the reason why, uh, informer is very important. It is our responsibility to speak out against evil in a society. Where things are not going well, reference to the protection and promotion of rights of citizens. We have the right to call the attention of the government, to ensure that things are properly done, it is our responsibility. Now, uh, we listen to, you know, we listen to the secretary of government, soup. Uh, this investigation, they equalize, and we're not equalizing. The institution is not a political institution. Everyone will tell you, well, it's very clever, the right, they will tell you, right, the right. So nobody will be clear here to be politic, and say that we do exercise. We not supporting anybody, we are supporting the African people. We make sure the protection of the African people's rights is on the right track. That's our responsibility. And so, uh, thank you for your company. We will, we will listen to the order, that tomorrow, and then, uh, we expect the other companies to be here tomorrow, tomorrow, but you are not. Follow up, he too, because he's the bigger player, because he's responsible for the life of our people. The citizens responsible for it, who are past police, and responsible for it is to protect life of our people. If a police, you could rather for the industry, and we want it, so we will allow that.
Thank you very much.
Well, that was the heads of the Independent National Commission of Immorats, Consulor Dexter Brown, leading the public area here today, at the conference hall, the hearing hall of the INCR.
Yes, I want to talk to you. Welcome, Commissioner, welcome to the president.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, the chairman, during the course of the week, we received this press release. Talking about your role in the administration today, and there was certainly, what I'm saying, almost all of the times of the year, rather than who had, was it done that today, the Student Unification Party, the super representative here, we announced a member from the CDC COP, from the Royal National Committee. Why do you say we will ask to this investigation, we care it all so far?
Um, we expect CDC COP will be here tomorrow. The reason why we didn't want for all of you to come together, there's a friction already between soup and COP, CDC. And I fear that we people have come together for explanation, so in their heart, they are. So we decided to split you in this, soup with COP, with the separate. Besides, we communicate with the legislature justice. Because the reason why we communicate with the legislature justice is that, uh, the legislature justice, and the minister who was standing with the legislature justice, is chairman of the, chairman of the vice president. And whatever happened in the country, we must be aware of it. And this is why we said, we will come and give us opinion on what happened. We will, they are watching the news, but you may be surprised that they are watching the news, they will come. I tell you, we see what they are watching.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, my name is Matthias, I'm from Sky. I just want to find out quickly whether you've been able to, um, do some investigation independently before embarking on this hearing exercise. hearing exercise, you know, that you gather some evidence, that you want to corroborate with the people you've been drafting with, that's one. Number two, you assured us earlier that the, um, police head would have been here tomorrow, would be here tomorrow, now you're telling us again that he's communicated to you that he's not coming.
We, we already said that I'm telling you to come tomorrow. You see, we not dropping a battery here, the government of police will support, if you're saying come tomorrow, we support you through the court, and if you're saying come with you, we're going to rise through the court, he must be here. The I N, the Human Rights Commission says that no government official, with any permission, will raise any issue of privilege to appear before this commission, he must appear, so don't worry about that.
Have you done some fact finding?
We got, we got a video clip. It did not happen on one point, we got a whole thing, we watched it, and...